Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is August 21st, 2018. I'd like to take a moment to ask the governor to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on councilmember Bob Ward.
Thanks, Mayor. As we convene this session of the City Council, I'd like to offer some thoughts and ask that we be guided by some basic principles as we undertake our proceedings tonight. As a governing body, we acknowledge that the actions of this council must address the needs of our city and take into account the interests and rights of our citizens. We offer our gratitude to all our city staff for their commitment and dedication to making our cities a safe and healthy place to live and work. We thank our citizens for their many contributions and support in our collective efforts devoted to creating and maintaining an inclusive community. We ask that our efforts tonight be guided by clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, and our decisions with impartiality. And we ask that our actions be guided by the highest standards of ethics and that our personal faiths give us the strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Thank you.
This time, we recognize our city clerk, Renee Morton.
The purpose of council is my responsibility to remind your community to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask at this time of year to prevent potential conflicts concerning to my citizens.
I do have one. It's Item H on the consent agenda. And I have a LLC that's involved with this project.
Do I hear a motion to refuse councilmember Owen from the consent agenda vote?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion is passed. Before council is our minutes from the July 17th, 2018, City Council meeting and the July 30th, 2018, special City Council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed.
Remove H from the consent agenda so that we can...
That's a question for council. Would council like to remove Item H separately from the consent agenda to allow councilmember Owen to vote on the other items?
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to move Item H to... Aye.
Second.
All those in favor of moving Item H from the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Item H has been moved. We have one add-on item to the consent agenda. That item is Item I, right-of-way adjustments. Do I hear a motion to approve that add-on item?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion is passed. Before council is the agenda minus Item H on the consent agenda and with Item I added on the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve that agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Agenda has been adopted. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to adopt a proposed 10.4% disadvantaged business enterprise goal for Link Transit from federal fiscal year, October 1st, 2018, through September 30th, 2021. Item B, to adopt a resolution approving the 2017 local water supply plan. Item C, to adopt a date of public hearing for September 4th, 2018, for submission of the 2017-2018 consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. Item D, to approve budget amendment 2019-4 to allow Recreation Department to use funds for the 2018 Conference of Softball Association's senior softball tournament. Item E, to approve budget amendment 2019-7 to allow Police Department to use funds from retail appropriations. Item F, to approve budget amendment 2019-8 to amend the Edward Byron Justice Assistant Grant Project ordinance to allow the Police Department to distribute 2017 JAG funds as required. Item G, to approve budget amendment 2019-9 to amend the Edward Justice Assistant Grant Program ordinance to allow the Police Department to distribute the 2018 JAG funds as required. Item I, to approve the right-of-way use agreement with Fiber Technology Networks LLC and Contera Ultra Broadband LLC. Do I hear a motion to approve this consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion is passed. Item H on the agenda, to approve budget amendment 2019-10 and award a contract to Central Bel Air Inc. for the contract services for a construction project at the Burlington Athletic Stadium. Do I hear a motion to approve that item?
Make a motion that we approve the item.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion is approved with four votes. Next, we move to our public hearings. Welcome back, councilmember Owen. We have a number of public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one has been set to consider amending the City of Burlington zoning ordinance text section 32.9, changes and amendments as it pertains to protest petitions. This time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. As you will recall, the state legislature has made changes to the protest petitions, and they are no longer used. Since the state statute has changed, we're changing our ordinance, and we're simply mirroring state statutes.
Any questions regarding the changes proposed?
Amy, why don't you explain to the public the basis of the state, how this rule change came about?
I know there's been...I don't know the exact circumstances, but I remember that there were some issues with causing the perception, anyway, that so many protest petitions were going out, that it was causing issues for development in communities across the state. And so, again, from what I recall, that's where this came from, that they were trying to be what they considered to be, anyway, more fair. People are still allowed to protest just in a different manner. They can speak at public hearings, they can attend meetings, they can even do a petition and submit that for council consideration, but there's no longer the requirement for a supermajority vote.
Any other council questions? All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item from this side of the room. You want from this side of the room. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding public hearing number one?
I make a motion that we adopt the amendment to zoning ordinance text as requested by staff.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion is approved. That moves us to item two on our public hearings. The public hearing has been set to consider amending...
We need a statement of consistency.
Consistency statement.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve this request based upon the consistency with the comprehensive plan and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the area.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion of consistency, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion is passed. Now, we move to item two. Public hearing is set to consider amending the City of Burlington zoning ordinance text section 32.9, table permitted uses as it pertains to non-academic schools. At this time, we again recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This is another city request for a text amendment. It would allow so-called "non-academic" schools to go into our I-3 zoning district where they're not currently allowed. Non-academic, as I reported last night, is something of the nature of martial arts, studio, some type of sports, coaching or instruction, arts classes. It would be something that is housed inside of a building, no activities outside, so staff didn't anticipate any issues with adjoining property owners as a result. No one from the public spoke in opposition to this at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend this to you.
Any questions regarding the proposed change?
Is there a particular entity that is looking to do this?
There is. There is. And from that, we thought that was something that had not been brought to us before, and we thought that would be a good use for that area and to offer in the city because it's not available in that area. So we decided to go ahead and put that forth as a city amendment.
Any other questions from council? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak regarding this topic from this side of the room. From this side of the room. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding item two?
I move we approve this request based upon consistency with the comprehensive plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the area.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion has passed. I move to item three. The public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from CB conditional business that was approved by the City of Burlington City Council on June 2nd, 2009, for the use of towing and storage of impounded vehicles to B-2 general business. The property is located at 1784 East Webb Avenue, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 134527. This time, we again recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This is a rezoning request to go from CB conditional business to B-2 general business. The site was formerly used for housing repossessed vehicles. Since this request is for a straight rezoning, you need to consider all potential uses for the property, and you have a list of those in your agenda packets. The thing about considering all those uses is that at some point, someone may come to rezone, but it may stay that way for many years to come and outlive the person who asked for it. The applicant stated at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that he intends to lower the height of the fence that is now six feet tall to four feet. Staff had expressed concerns about the appearance of the existing fence along this corridor, which is one of the corridors, as you will recall, that's in the comprehensive land use plan for improvement along that stretch. No one from the public spoke in opposition at the meeting. The Commission voted unanimously to recommend the request. The applicant is out of town, so Mr. Ted Crum is here to speak to this request.
Excuse me. And Lou, my husband being out of town, I would like to speak. I'm sorry you didn't know that.
No, that's fine.
Honorable mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity, although I wish I were not here. But as I understand it, the recommendation is now that we do not receive B-2. That's correct. Is that what you just said?
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended B-2.
And you are still with that?
That was the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is that the staff's recommendation?
The staff's recommendation was that the fencing was a problem and that it needed to stay at some type of conditional.
Okay. I apologize for the confusion. We got the call this morning. My husband's in Houston, and we were under the impression the planning committee had changed their stance, although we know that there is great confusion about the fence. We want the fence. We're agreeable to lowering it from six feet to four feet. Yes.
Can you just state your name and address?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm Linda Carter. My address is 12 Dorset Place, Durham, North Carolina. Thank you. So we really...if the fence had needed to be lowered before today's meeting, we would have been happy to have worked with the seller and tried to have gotten that done, although we haven't closed on the property because we've been waiting on this. So it's been somewhat of a conundrum on who does what when, but we are in agreement if we need to have a surety bond or something to give somebody a guarantee that that fence will be lowered. I've brought a check. We can try to do that. The zoning for everything else on Webb Avenue, as I understand, is B-2. So we are asking for B-2 because four-foot fences are allowed. If you go to conditional, I believe I understand, and I could be misspeaking, but if we go to conditional, I think we can be told we cannot have any fence. I could be wrong on that and can be corrected, but we feel like that by going to B-2, we're within the purview. We like the fence. I read on the staff's recommendation that with the property vacant or being used solely as office use, the fence is unattractive and creates an unappealing view with Webb Avenue Unattractive is not a legal term. I think it's subjective. We were attracted to that property because of the fence for security reasons. It's very difficult to speak to this group because my husband and I have been corporate citizens in Albemarle, North Carolina, for 30-some years. We're relocating to Durham. This is sort of the halfway point for his business. Property here is much more reasonably priced, and you do not know us as corporate or civic citizens. And I'm sorry, you know, I don't know how to tell you that when we gave the planning committee our commitment that we would lower that, we weren't just blowing smoke. We have other properties in Albemarle right now. The property is very appealing. The former owner has awnings. His business was definitely not an engineering business. He's removed the electric fence, which there was an issue when we first started talking about it. So he's done that, and that's been in compliance. We don't need an electric fence. I don't know what else to tell you other than I would greatly appreciate getting this resolved tonight. You know, it's been three weeks since the other meeting. We thought we were ready to close this week, hopefully. We would both like to end our other carrying charges and just get on with the move. I can tell you from now till the cows come home that we will make it appealing, but other than giving you a surety bond or some kind of financial security, I don't know what else to tell you, but I can answer any questions. I'm sorry.
Maybe from a clarification of exactly what conditional zoning is would be helpful because conditional zoning would limit the scope and purpose, but you could still have the four-foot fence if that was a condition and it was approved. It would not change that piece of it. I think there was some...there is some legal ramifications as to straight B-2 zoning and what we have the ability to enforce after the fact versus getting it done ahead of time. And the city attorney may can shed some light on that.
That's correct. Well, if you read back through the minutes from the PNC meeting, the staff had originally recommended an aisle to the PNC based upon the fact that the fence was there and it was incompatible with a B-2 zone. When they were not asking for a conditional B-2 zone, but a straight B-2 zone, and it was incompatible with...it was not part of it. It reads as if the PNC actually acted, treated this as a conditional request and went through the process of getting an offer from you to have the fence reduced to four feet tall. And that's all well and good, not doubting that she would do that, but in fact, this was not a conditional zoning. This was a straight rezoning to a B-2, and there's no way for the city, unless it had already been done at this point in time.
Well, and therein lies our issue because no one called us the day after, no one called us the week after, no one called us the second week after. We got the call this morning, and that really seems punitive in trying to move forward with the closing and to get it done. We didn't really consider that our statement that we would lower that fence was a conditional anything. We were giving our word. That was how we looked at it. We looked at that we said this is straight B-2, four feet allowed, good, but in my husband's notes at the meeting, which he did give, I think, to the staff, he had written, "We will lower that fence." So we never considered it a conditional in the term that you're using, conditional zoning. We considered it a total commitment on good faith from us, and maybe I realize, you know, that it's hard for us in this day and age to go forward on, you know, anybody's good faith statements. That's okay. But I really take issue with this fact. We were notified this morning with my husband in Houston could not possibly get here. We could have had it lowered if someone had been gracious enough to let us know that, and that was not stated at the zoning meeting. And our point was, we had to get through the approval tonight. We could close, and then we would get it done. And you have to realize, the seller's viewpoint, you know, he doesn't want to sink any more money into it. And then do we sink it in when we don't have title? So it is a terrible conundrum, and it's one of those things when you think something's simple and then it's not. So I apologize, so...
Yes, ma'am. And let me point out that on the application, it did represent that you were acting in behalf of none of yourselves, and I don't know if you had an actual real option, written option on the property or not, but you had the signature of the seller indicating that he was in agreement.
Yes.
What you were representing.
Yes.
And the difficulty with this is, this is a straight B-2 rezoning, and there's no way to condition it, even though it may have been stated at the PNC meeting as a condition. There is no way for us to enforce that. So that would have to be done. Now, I appreciate the fact that you've talked about a surety bond and all, but our code doesn't provide for that either, not at this point in time.
Okay.
So in my mind, Mr. Mayor and Council, you could either proceed to vote up and down on the B-2 rezoning that's before you. You could...
Could we do B-2 conditional upon fencing?
No, that's not really what's before you now. It is just a B-2.
That's not what's advertised.
Correct. So, or put this off and turn around and...or indicate that if you wish to have it remain conditional zoning. And you can condition it with...at the current time, it's rezoned with two conditions. One is to use, and the use is for storage of repo'd automobiles. And the second is conditioned to use on a six-foot fence. Well, the six-foot fence is not compatible with B-2 zoning, so therefore, you could bring it back under conditional zoning. If you wanted to limit it as to use, fine, for the engineering firm, I believe you indicated?
Yes.
Engineering firm, and then followed with a four-foot fence, which I think the staff's original recommendation was to remove the fence. It really wasn't compatible much with a engineering firm, but you indicated you want to keep it.
Yes.
With an engineering firm, and that'd be the fine, but it would have to be a four-foot fence. So those seem to be the options there.
So in reality, what you're saying then, for us to vote to go to B-2, the fence has...work has to be completed?
Yes, because after y'all have rezoned it, B-2, you have no enforcement mechanism to get it removed.
So it would be strictly a trust factor as opposed to a legal...
Yeah.
Plus, not the legal authority.
Yes. Yes.
At the same time...
That wasn't necessary. That's not what's there.
But at the same time, please keep in mind the B-2 zoning and all the uses that are allowed under B-2.
What's the adjacent properties? Are they B-2?
They are B-2.
Okay. So it would be compatible with existing land uses in the area? So it seems to me, from a compatibility standpoint, the fence is the issue, to get it in compliance. If there was a way to do this conditional, B-2 conditional upon the fence, but you're saying we can't do that because it was not advertised as such?
It was not advertised as such.
And that's clearly the public hearing statute.
So can we change the condition?
Well...
We would have to enter into that rezoning and hope it gets... So technically, based on this, then, for them to do what they want to do, we have to start back over, advertise it as B-2?
With...
No, it's already B-2.
B-2 with condition?
No, it's conditional now.
Or just give them a period of time, or you can continue it over one meeting if they can get the fence down to four feet within that period of time, then you can vote on this, okay?
It's just straight B-2.
Yes. Or in the alternative, if you're inclined to go with a conditional, if this council's inclined to go with a conditional zoning of B-2, then you could start the process over.
Well, I understand, and the communication issue, I totally get the frustrations behind that. I believe in everyone's defense, this was a legal situation that was discovered late and not discovered early, and that's our mistake on that, that that wasn't discovered and communicated. But it appears to me that B-2 is completely compatible in the area, that it's as simple as getting the fence lowered. There ought to be a way to get that accomplished. Either they...
On with it.
So we could, in theory, we could...or in reality, we can approve it, B-2.
You can vote this evening.
We can vote this evening to approve it or disapprove it, but we would have no legal recourse on ensuring that the fence is made compliant. It would be 100% good faith on behalf of the petition.
Or it could make it effective maybe a month out. I know it's going to require some good faith on their part to go ahead and do it. No, we're not make it effective this evening. If you were inclined to approve it, you can approve it and make it effective, you know, two weeks out, you know, or, you know, you could report back to us, you know, at the first meeting in September. That's not that far away.
But that still doesn't have the enforcement mechanism?
You wouldn't have that for them, no.
And then the alternative that you mentioned is to allow additional time to either postpone this public hearing or to re-advertise a public hearing?
You're in the public hearing.
Yeah.
Now, just continue the public hearing. Don't close the public hearing. Just continue the public hearing over to a date certain, whatever amount of time you would need to get the fence down to the four-foot.
Can we get a week? We would really try to get it done by...well, my husband's still in Houston, but get it done by the following Friday, like 10 days out. This is our realtor, so...
Yeah, I think for council. If you could step to the microphone.
Fence can come down.
If you could step to the microphone.
You got it. Get it back yourself.
And then if you could state your name.
I'm Ted Crum, Richard Jones Realtor, and my address is 712 Gray Rock Road, or 710, oh, we just moved, Golf House Road East at Stony Creek. I'm the person that listed the property and sold the property, and I was sold this morning at 10 o'clock about this situation. And it just seemed... And it just seems to me like this is the body that can correct that situation. And to get, you know, to get hung up on something, nobody's going to get arrested, I don't think, if you go ahead and do what you said you were going to do. If you look at that map, if you show that map to 100 people and say, "We want to rezon that one that's got the stripes on it," what do you think it ought to be? It seems just reasonable to make this thing happen. These folks are going to lower the fence. They're offering a bond of, you know, $5,000 or $10,000 that they would get back when it's lowered. And it will be, we've already gotten prices on it. It can get done quickly. Couldn't do it when somebody else owns the property. It just does not make sense. So, anyway, that's... Anybody have any questions for me?
Questions from counsel for Mr. Crum?
I mean, it's the same fences up there now.
Yeah.
They're not building a fence. In good faith, they're going to take one down.
What we're doing is taking one down and putting another one up, or it's going to be a new one.
Sure.
And four feet.
I think the conundrum's on both sides. But it's as simple as that. I mean, the fence is there now. It should be improved, and the hope would be that it would be improved, but there's no legal ramifications on us to do that. But at the end of the day, we're not making the property worse. We're hoping it's going to become better. And B2 is compatible with the other areas around. So I would say we proceed. And if that's what you guys would want to do, we can proceed with the vote and see.
All right. So this is a public hearing, so prior to, but we need to conduct the public hearing. Without any other counsel questions, we'll begin the public hearing.
Ms. Nelson, you mentioned last night the taller poles. Is that included in your four-foot description, that all those taller poles come down that were used for the electric?
Right. That's something that I was unaware of until yesterday, when I went out on the site visit. From a visual corridor perspective, I would recommend that those poles be cut down. I don't see what purpose they would serve. They're inside the existing fence. So, and electrified fences are not allowed, so I would recommend those poles come down.
Which electrified fence has been removed, I think.
The common poles are still.
So the poles, would the poles be a violation of B2 zoning?
Yeah, they're just poles.
So they would be allowed?
Unsightly, but they're...
I understand.
Yeah, they're just poles.
I understand, unsightly, but they would be allowed.
Correct.
In B2s.
Right.
Same poles as their name?
Yes.
Any other counsel questions prior to the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this topic, anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear any questions or a motion from counsel regarding this item?
I understand the legal dilemma of B2 and what we're trying to accomplish, but I do believe, I'm hopeful in the petitioner's statement that they're going to correct this issue, but I would make a motion that we approve the rezoning as requested. I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been seconded. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion has passed.
You gotta do the motion with consistency.
I'll make that. I also make the motion that we approve this request based upon the consistency with the comprehensive plan and that this action is reasonable in the public interest and that the amendment is compatible with the existing land uses in the area.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion, statement of consistency has passed. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, we really are open to business in our community. I know this is an unusual situation and that I'm not saying who's right, who's wrong, but please don't, if you've got interest in doing business here, please don't take this as we're trying to take it and make it so complicated that people don't want to come and ask us questions. That's not...
Thank you very much. Thank you.
With enough conversation, we generally get it worked out. That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Ted, for coming this evening. We look forward to seeing you around the community in the future. This moves us to item four on our agenda. Public hearing is set to consider amending a conditional rezoning that was approved by the Burlington City Council on August 19, 2008, for the use of an automobile dealership and to rezone from O&amp;I Office and Institutional District to CB Conditional Business District to add the use of an auto rentals and an auto automobile body and fender repair shop. The property is located at 3860 Danbrook Road, referenced as Alman's County Tax Identification Number 106849, and being a portion of 106903. This time, we again recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This is a request for rezoning to go from conditional business and O&amp;I to conditional business. Basically, they're taking a sliver of O&amp;I and putting it together zoning-wise to cover the entire area of their existing business and what they're proposing. The work is to be conducted, the work of the facility proposed is to be conducted in a completely enclosed building with landscape buffers and a solid opaque fence on three sides. In your agenda packets, and I'll show you that, there's a color version of the site plan. In your agenda packet, as was in the agenda packet for the Planning and Zoning Commission, you will find information on this request, including the old request. A condition applied to the rezoning in 2008 was that the dealership would not have a body repair shop. It was stated at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that the dealership had someone to handle bodywork on vehicles off-site at that time. That person is retiring, and that was said to be the reason for bringing this forward at this time. The project has been vetted through the city's Technical Review Committee. No one from the public spoke in opposition, and the commission voted unanimously to approve the rezoning request. Mr. Joe Kallo is here to speak to this.
Welcome, Mr. Kallo.
I did just have one quick question. I had just a few slides there. I will follow Mr. Huffman's advice, to be short. But I had some over there. I don't know if you want to lead to...
You're welcome.
Move it this way. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Would you be okay if I came over there?
Yeah, you can come over here. I got it set up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Joe Kallo. I'm an attorney at Pittman &amp; Steele, and I'm here on behalf of Cox Associates LLC. My client owns the Cox Toyota dealership at 3860 Danbrook Road, which is visible from the interstate. My client wishes to amend the conditional zoning from August 19, 2008, to allow for the addition of a building which will do auto rentals as well as body and fender repair work. As previously referenced by Ms. Nelson, condition three of the earlier 2008 rezoning prohibited bodywork on the property. The property that it would be constructed on is this area over here on the left. You can almost see where, why this is on the eastern side of this particular tract. I'll discuss the zoning just in a little more detail at the very end. Here's a Google Earth picture of the property, and I've kind of oriented you as to where things are located. I think that everyone is already familiar with the existing building. It has a high visibility from the interstate and was constructed with a modern style to a high standard. The new facility would, of course, be constructed to match the existing one. There's another photo there. How did we get there? As referenced by Ms. Nelson, since 2008, a gentleman by the name of Charles Murray, who's the owner of Patton's Collision Shop, used an office at Cox to provide free body shop estimates to their customers. Customers would get a rental car from Cox while Mr. Patton repaired their vehicles off-site. He's going to be retired, and this has desecrated this new plan here. The good part about this is that there would be some job creation and that the employee count would increase from over 80 to over 100 to have people in the new facility. This is a front view of the proposed facility. Another front view. You can see it's consistent with what's already there. Most important, probably from your perspective, is the rear view. You'll note that the application requires the repair work to be done in an enclosed area. And you'll see that there's fencing that is opaque all the way around where the cars would be stored. There's that. That, where even where they come in on the gates, that's made to be an opaque area. You see that right there? On the site plan, you can see where it's located, on the right or on the eastern part. And in the upper left-hand corner of the site plan, you'll see that part of it is a specific plan for a proposed fence detail. For anyone who knows or cares, the fence in question was based upon the fencing for the Copart facility that's on Highway 70 near Meven. And that had received some positive feedback, and that's why we decided to use that one. There's the zoning map. There are two parts. The conditions are being amended for the existing part that's yellow. In addition, my client owns some property that is over on the east side that's already O&amp;I, so the line would be moved over just a little bit to allow some room for this building to be placed there. And as previously mentioned, the project has received a favorable recommendation from planning and from P&amp;Z. One thing I did want to mention, too, that is of considerable importance, is that we're asking for that one condition to be taken away so we can put in the body shop. All the other conditions that are set forth in the existing August 19, 2008 conditional use, those would all remain. So we're not asking to change any of those other ones. One common question that everyone gets with rezoning requests is, what do the neighbors think of this? Looking at the property, you'll see to the north, there's Danbrook in the interstate, so not many people have anything to say there. Of course, on the east and the west, the property's owned by my client. To the south, you have some property that's under active multifamily development. There's a gentleman by the name of Bob Rayner, who owns this green tract. I understand my client has spoken with him, and he's got no issue with it. They did kind of go above and beyond. They went and talked with the people over in Lake McIntosh and had a meeting at the dealership on the 16th. I think five residents showed up, but none of them had any real issue, and they were fine with it, too. Last and least, and then I'll be done, is just addressing the issue of traffic. As you may recall, under the previous model, customers would come in, they'd bring in their cars, they were towed, you know, over there to look at, and then they were taken off. I don't see that this is really going to take any change traffic dramatically, other than the fact that it might reduce it because the vehicles are going to stay there and there'll be less back and forth going on, getting the vehicles in and out. So that's all I've got. If there are any questions that are specific relating to engineering or the dealership, we have people that are here as well.
Any questions from counsel before we begin the public hearing? All right. Thank you, Mr. Kallo. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this agenda item. Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this agenda item?
I move. We approve the request based upon the consistency with the comprehensive plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the area.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion has passed. Thank you very much, Mr. Kallo. Thank you very much for...
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five on our public hearing list. A public hearing is set to consider the adoption of the City of Burlington's Code of Ordinance Recompensation. This time, we recognize our city attorney, David Huffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. First of all, I'd like to introduce Charles Bateman and Ginger Booker, and they're no strangers to any of us here, who, both of these individuals have been, it's a rather lengthy process here, but over four years, rewrite, a comprehensive rewrite of our Burlington Code of Ordinances. And also, at this point in time, I'd also like to recognize again these individuals here, all the department heads who have been involved, and very much involved on a weekly basis with the rewrite that we have before you this evening. If I could set this context, the rewrite was finally presented to you on July 17 of 2017 and followed up with an election, and we, Mr. Owen, took the dice here with the rest of you. And for the 2017-18 winter, we each of y'all met with me, and I appreciate y'all's time and willingness to do that on a one-on-one basis. Took a great deal of time, but I appreciate that. You've had two city council work sessions that have been devoted to this in February and again in March. And through those work sessions, you resolved many of the, all of the policy issues, really, and reached a consensus among you as to which direction you wanted staff to go with. And you were presented on July 17 of this year, 2018, with a card copy of which many of you have here. At that time, I sent an email out to the department heads again to take one last review and if any editorial changes needed to be made, or even substantive changes needed to be made. And you've had quite a few editorial changes, and we anticipate that we're going to run into those as we go forward in the implementation. The effective date of this is proposed to be October 1, 2018. Before you, I place at your seat a copy of the ordinance to adopt the recodified Code of Ordinances for the City of Burlington, North Carolina. We do anticipate that going forward, that, as I say, the rubber meets the road as we implement this. We're going to expect to have to tweak this Code of Ordinances. This was a comprehensive rewrite and somewhat of a massive, massive thing to do. Along those same lines, we will be monitoring it for the effectiveness and efficiency in the implementation process. And had a conversation with several of you. And in doing that, we also keep our eye peeled across the state for anything that's going on in the area of municipal law that would have some impact on that, and we would want to be proactive, and we would be quick to come back in and tweak our ordinances to fall in line with anything we see happening across the state. Mr. Mayor, with that, I'd say we're open for the public hearing.
Any questions from counsel prior to the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak, anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion from counsel to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding the city ordinances?
I sure would like to make that motion.
Go right on ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion, we adopt a Code of Ordinances, a recodified. Good job. Thank you very much.
Bob's time to throw the bone out. I would second that.
All right. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? Taking a lot of work to get to this point. We appreciate everyone's effort. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion has passed. Thank you to all of staff. Thank you, Ginger. Thank you, Charles. Thank you, Attorney Huffman. We appreciate all your efforts. Been a little light some bedside reading. We have copies available, but also be posted online. This moves us to item six on our agenda for new business. City council will consider approving budget amendment 2019-5 for Recreation Department use of funds donated by Impact Aliments to purchase a mobile recreation unit as part of the city's Youth Solutions Initiative. This time, we recognize Assistant Director of Recreation and Parks, Lisa Wolf.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for this opportunity to give you guys an update of where we are in the process of the MRU. I want to give you a little bit of background. Basically, in the spring of 2018, we applied for a Building Healthy Environment Grant through Impact Aliments. We were granted $50,000 with that grant to basically build, or, well, purchase and kind of build a vehicle similar to what you see here on the screen. And the timing, basically, we really couldn't be any more appropriate to tie this with the Youth Solutions Initiative. As you can see in the photos, this will be a vehicle that'll be outfitted, will house active equipment along with our trained staff. The van will travel around the city, providing structured activities for residents, engaging children and families in movement, wellness, and play opportunities, leading to healthy lifestyles. As I said, the initiative began actually prior to the Youth Solutions Initiative. However, the timing couldn't be more appropriate. I want to show you, I got a text message from one of my staff members earlier as I was getting ready to come to this meeting. And this right here will just sum up... And this right here will just sum up the whole effect of the Youth Solutions. Can you read what that says? This is tonight's Youth Solutions program over at Beaumont, and this was written in chalk by a 10-year-old girl, impromptu, nothing. And it says, "City of Burlington, be Youth Solutions." Okay? If that doesn't give you a little goosebumps, I don't know what does, but... So Recreation, to bring you back to speed here with the MRU, Recreation and Parks will serve as the lead agency with the Mobile Recreation Unit. Will be responsible for the maintenance upkeep and program planning with staff. The City of Graham, because this is a collaboration, partnership of grant, will be working with us together to have the same effect that they hope to achieve, that we hope to achieve within their city. The effort is proof that strengthening our resources together can make a difference in our community. Our department team, I have to give credit to my staff, Melissa Hous and Emily Lott. They deserve the recognition for compiling the grant itself and presenting it to the Impact Aliments Board. Melissa will oversee the actual MRU. We still have to come up with a creative name for that, but right now, it's the Mobile Recreation Unit. So with that, I'd like to really express our thanks to Impact Aliments, because that organization, I had reached out to Marcy Green this morning, just to kind of get a, because we get a lot of grants that sometimes we don't all hear about, and they might be just small grants. And we've received over $1.5 million in grant funding from Impact Aliments alone. Okay? That means that encompasses the Splash Park, that encompasses not only this MRU, but signage, in addition to new signage and trail markings at Town and Country Park. So it's a true community partner. And tied along with that, as a footnote, you'll be seeing another presentation similar to this in the future, where we were just awarded two more grants from Impact Aliments. And I credit our city staff team here with Nolan, Nolan's team, Eric Hilton, Todd, where Todd is? Todd Lambert, and Mike Nun, for our recent presentation to the board. Again, the three of us presented to the Impact Board for two other projects. One is $100,000 grant for building and collaboratively planning a play space area at the North Park walking track to redesign that space. And as you all know, we're doing a lot of work there, as it is. And the other one is a $50,000 grant to help kick off the next phase, or the next project of the Greenway Project, which is the Hall River Trail Project and the Ruby Lane piece, which is also tied with animal services. So that's another $150,000 that Impact Aliments' Board has agreed to support our initiative and efforts. So thank you for your support and your involvement, and we hope to see you playing with us with the MRU. Any questions or comments?
Questions from council?
Thanks.
All right. Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I move we approve the budget amendment for this purchase, and certainly, I think a great deal of credit needs to go to Ms. Hayes, in reference to the City Youth Solution Initiative, and her persistence to get the rest of us in line to go forward. So I certainly would like to make that motion.
Well, I'll second it, and I'll say that the Recreation Department deserves all of the credit that they can be awarded as well, because they'd already thought of this before Youth Solutions. So credit where it's due, and Impact Aliments. I mean, these public-private partnerships, that's what we're hoping we can continue to do, and they have been wonderful. It's been quite an addition to our community, because we didn't have places to go before Impact Aliments. So we're quite grateful.
Any questions?
Police Department's been a big part of that, too. Police Department, I don't want to get in.
Yes, sorry.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Call those opposed. Motion is passed. If you haven't been out to Beaumont or Tucker Street to play with the kids, it is a lot of fun, and those will be continuing through next week, I believe. Item seven on our agenda. City Council will consider approving budget amendment 2019-6 for Community Development Division, and adopting the Urgent Repair Program Assistance and Procurement and Disbursement Policies for the 2018-2019 Urgent Repair Program. This time, we recognize Community Development Administrator, Sonya Randwell.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Tonight, I come before you to request approval for the grant that we received from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for $85,000 this year, which was an increase of $10,000 over what we have received in the past. And with those funds, we will be able to rehab approximately 10 households in Alamance County.
Questions regarding the proposal? Do I hear a motion to approve this budget amendment? So moved. All those in favor of the budget amendment, amendment approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Call those opposed. Motion is passed. And then, a second motion to approve the Urgent Repair Program.
Make a motion to adopt the Urgent Repair Program and Procurement and Disbursement Policies.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Call those opposed. Motion is passed. Thank you very much, Sonya. Item eight, City Council will consider approving budget amendment 2019-11 in General Fund 2018-19 for financed equipment, and approve the lease purchase funding agreement with Regions Bank and banking and reimbursement resolutions, and authorize the mayor, director of finance, and city clerk to sign and execute the bank's loan documents upon city attorney review and approval. This time, we recognize Finance and Risk Management Director, Peggy Reese.
Actually, Mr. Mayor...
Say, I'll see Peggy around.
No, she's not here. As far as the, we have, we've already reviewed, the city attorney's office has already reviewed the first set of documents that came in, and they were rather lengthy and interesting, but not appropriate for what they represented to be, so they were sent back.
Okay.
Okay? And that's why the delay here, and we're setting this condition upon our approval. We have not yet gotten the second set of documents back to approve.
Okay.
David, just a question. Regions Bank, is that a new bid or?
It was. It was. That's correct.
That's reasonable.
Set of documents that came were new, as opposed to previous years.
So we're not voting on this? Is that what you're...
Yeah, you are. You are. I was just trying to make an explanation.
It's contingent upon the...
Yeah, contingent upon those having shots to review them again once we get them back.
And there are two...
This is not, they were not the first time bidder. They'd bid the last, this is the third year they'd bid. I solicited those bids, and this is the third year they'd bid. This is the first time they've wanted to bid.
So the...
Do you have a question?
The documentation, the issue that you have with, was it in there? Was it not compatible with the bid, or...
No, that wasn't it at all. They simply sent some form documents over. They're more in line with a straight lease, and that's really not what this is. We're actually purchasing it, and it's more in terms of financing.
I got you.
We're putting the collateral up for security.
So it's a money purchase security agreement?
Exactly. And that's what they failed to send.
So, Mr. Hayes, since you got the bid, you feel comfortable with this institution?
Yes, sir.
That's...
Yes, sir, without a doubt. They're fine. They've just misunderstood the lease. They have a couple of different kinds of lease documents, funding documents, and they just misunderstood, and we didn't catch it until later.
Any other questions from council? Do I hear a motion to approve budget amendment 2019-11?
So moved, contingent upon review and approval by the city attorney's office. Is that what you need to do?
Correct. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Call those opposed. Motion is passed. Do I hear a motion for the lease purchase funding agreement?
Seems like that motion included both what you want them to say.
It did include both. Okay, so you do not need to on that one. All right. So that concludes our agenda items. We have a number of public comments this evening. Go ahead and begin. I'm going to try and read the handwriting from Thompson. This is Thompson.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, city council, and ladies and gentlemen, I heard about the pipeline on the news. I've heard a lot of people talk against it. This we do not need. The state of North Carolina has done, been blessed by everything. And I found out tonight that the pipeline will be going through this young lady's farm. The pipeline will damage her property, her animals, if anything happens to the pipeline. And I also heard that this is the cheapest way to go this route instead of going around. Why do we need a pipeline? It don't make sense to me. The pipeline does not give us jobs. It does not create nothing, except raising taxes on property, doing other things that it's not supposed to be doing. And it's hurting the poor people, the ones that does pay taxes. It also hurts the handicapped, which they do have a voice, but nobody listens to them. They put them in a corner and think they have no sense. When they go to work, they still have to pay taxes. They pay property taxes, they pay city taxes, state taxes, and everything else. It comes out of their check. How do I know? You're looking at a handicapped person. And I am sick of people not building, job creating. We have plants, mills, sitting here waiting for something to go in. But yet, the City of Burlington, and Graham, and all the other states here in North Carolina wants to bring a pipeline in. We don't need a pipeline. North Carolina has been blessed by God. We had a few storms, we've had a few floods, but other than that, we have been blessed. And if you bring a pipeline in here, it's going to destroy property, it will destroy our animals, and it will probably damage people's health. A long time ago, there was a governor, I can't think of her name, but she stopped. They wanted to go in our oceans to build oil factories. And she stopped it, because North Carolina, they fish, that's their job. They bring fish in for the restaurants. So she stopped all of that. So we definitely do not need this pipeline at all. And they say it's cheap for them, but it's high taxes for us. Anybody with common sense can see that. I'm not stupid, and I'm not dumb. I know exactly what's going to be planned, and I can see it, because God told me this is what's going to happen. If you bring it in, taxes will go up, people will be out of jobs, and they say it created. It only creates jobs for people that our high school college degree has not got their hands dirty in the nitty-gritty dirt. It doesn't count for people that cannot have education, cannot go to college, cannot are not college material. But it's part of the rich that is pressuring the poor.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Next on our public hearing, I have Perry Slate.
Welcome. Thank you. Move that back a little bit. My name is Perry Slate. I live at 871 Border Lake Trail in Burlington. My name is Perry, and I'm here on behalf of my family and our community. I live on a farm off of Deep Creek Church Road, out in the northeastern part of Alamance County. And I'm speaking tonight because I think it's vital that you hear the side from a landowner's point of view. I know that, he presented to you last night. There's dozens and dozens of stories. Mine's one, a very important one to me. The proposed routes, of which there are more than one at this point, all entail crossing my entire farm, corner to corner. They come in at one corner, come up and come through our houses, and go out at the highway to the other corner. Few reasons that I oppose the pipeline. First of all, our land is family land. I'm the eighth generation to farm, and yes, I have worked much, 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 much on our farm. Milk cows, full tobacco, about anything you want me to do, I've done it. I'm the eighth generation to live there. It's been in my family since the late 1700s. We have a very strong love and respect for our land, and you can just imagine what it does to us to think that this company can come in and abuse eminent domain, in my opinion, and take it away from us. It is not only the home to my generation. My mother still lives there with us, but it's the future home for our children and our grandchildren. We've had many financial opportunities on our farm. People think it would be a great place for our housing development, or one time an airport, or golf course, or all these things to make great money off of, and our answer has always been no, and it always will be no. It's very precious and dear to us. It has no price tag. So just imagining how sickening it is to think they won't come in and give us pennies for an easement and destroy the property value of our land. Our farm is a working hay farm. Some of us are retired teachers, and we raise hay as a second income. The economic use and need for our farm is vital to our family, and this is true of our neighboring farmers as well, the people that join us. They have a forestry program on their land. Another consideration is the lack of validation of need. I myself have attended a meeting at the Attorney General's Office at the Department of Justice this summer. It seems like, depending on who you listen to, what that need is or is not. And that's one thing we did. We asked for a study or a report that would verify the need or lack thereof of this pipeline. Finally, pipelines are dangerous. Our community, including our farm, does not need these heightened risks of explosions, fires, or extreme pressure that would accompany a fracked gas pipeline. With the proposed routes all coming across our farm, if one does blow, it takes out every home on our farm, of which is mine, my mother's, my nieces, my sister-in-laws would love to be my daughters, if this can get ironed out, one's waiting to build right now. Also, it'd be a good point to tell you that we border the city lake. They sunk my grandfather's boat when they took our land to put the city lake in, and it is a source of drinking water for everyone. So again, if that explosion happens, everybody's going to be impacted. I don't want this pipeline in my yard, and I think if you're honest, you wouldn't want it in your yard, but right now, it's out in the country, and that doesn't affect you guys. I'd love to have a resolution from you against it, and if you won't do that for me, I beg you to become informed. At least go find out what it is and not base it on falsehoods that you might have been presented at another meeting. If you'll go back and watch some of the videos, Youtubes of the Alamance County Commissioner meetings, you'll find out some information that may shock you, that has been presented. Thank you. Please protect my land and the rest of the counties, and if there's any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Mrs. Slate. Next on our public hearings, I have James Samuel. Welcome.
I'm here, city council, and members of the city. My concern, my name is James Samuel, and I live on 202 Seventh Street. Every day, I sit on my porch, I see people pass by, and they throw things out their car. Look up the street, the trash can comes in on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the trash can sit on the side of the street. And one day, I was coming down Meven Street, and it was windy, and a trash can blew out in the street in front of my car. I had to pull over, pull to the left, almost hit the car on the side of me. So I want to know what could be done about the trash cans staying on the side of the street after eight hours, because I guess everybody works an eight-hour shift. So after eight, 10 hours, attending people that should pull the trash can in, should be fine or something. And then, my next concern is in my area. I cut the grass on the city side, like the city. I cut the sides of the road with my weed eater, because nobody comes in and cut it for months. So now, I stop, because people just pass and... So now I stop, because people just pass and throw trash out. So I want to know if something could be done towards that, or, you know, I'll be willing to continue to cut it. But as long as they pass in the cars and throw stuff out, I wouldn't do it, because I don't. So I just want to...
We appreciate you coming. We actually just had a presentation last night about the Community Improvement Program that we've put in place to be more proactive about some of the issues that you just raised. And I'd ask that staff speak with you after the meeting about getting that on our proactive enforcement list.
Mr. Smith, we also, we have the ordinance on the trash cans.
Yep. 24 hours before and after.
That's correct. The, in fact, we just, you know, approved a modification to our ordinances, but the sanitation, solid waste ordinance, you know, has restrictions on time when trash cans can be out. So if they're out beyond that time, we can, we can go address those, and we've had to deal with those in the past. So we will contact and connect with the gentleman after the meeting here and find out where these are and address those accordingly.
Excellent. We appreciate you coming and speaking to that issue.
Oh, thank you.
And just so everyone's aware, we've got the Community Improvement Program, but the Burlington Connected Program is also available for folks to make reports either online on the city website through Burlington Connected, on the phone application, which is available for Apple and Android phones, as well as to call the Burlington Connected Line. So we appreciate you being the eyes and ears for our community and caring about the visual appearance of our community. That concludes our public comments. Do I hear any city council comments?
Mayor, I like to think the staff are, there's an awful lot on this agenda that just didn't happen. You know, a lot of time and effort went into, into hearing a lot of these options, and even in reference to the zoning on Webb Avenue, the city attorney was doing his job in terms of putting that out to us. So we were very fortunate to have a well-educated, I think, experienced, dedicated staff, and the citizens of our community truly benefit from that.
Any other council comments?
I just want to comment, it's not over yet, the Youth Solutions, the pop-up parties at Tucker Street and Beaumont Avenue, but that's been pretty amazing, and the staff in the police department can't, I especially want to applaud the police who've been out there, because they wear what Brian has on now, and it is hot out there. I'm very grateful to you and to all of the Recreation Department staff who have done this through this summer. I'm anxious to hear what the results are, but I know that the people who have participated have really enjoyed themselves. So thank you very much for that.
And building on that, August 7th was National Night Out. We had a wonderful turnout. Pretty good weather until the rain came in, but we had probably 41 block parties all around the city. We had over 100 sworn police officers participate. We had firefighters, city council members, and city staff flanked out all across the city to help support those parties, to meet neighbors, and to help understand the needs of the community. We're honored and proud to have such a vibe with National Night Out program, and the community feeds directly into the Neighborhood Watch program that helps keep our communities safe. I'd like to take just a moment to mention some upcoming events. This is Fourth Friday this week, so we invite everyone to downtown. This Friday, 4:30 to 9 o'clock, at the Historic Depot, for food trucks, music, fun, family-friendly. It's always a wonderful event. And then Carousel Festival is coming up, just a couple weeks away, September 15th and 16th, in City Park, as our largest festival of the year. We look forward to a wonderful event attracting tens of thousands of people to City Park. And then we've received a special invitation from our sister city, which is South Korea, for us to visit for their Fall Festival, also September 13th through 16th. We get this invitation every year, this will be their 22nd annual Fall Festival, and my wife and I are delighted this year to take them up on their invitation. We'll be traveling at our own expense to South Korea to visit and to help strengthen our sister-city relationship. So this is the first time our mayor's visited since Steve Ross visited during his term as mayor. Any other council comments?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Take care of the county. Say, oh, yeah. You got your own problems. Oh, yeah. You're good.